Okay. All right.
To them I put it out there, it's Tuesday or Thursday. Thursday or Tuesday. But I have my press conference. I have something to talk to them.
I think she's so interested in love. And she's like, back up. Oh, wow. So, yeah, but I was here. I was looking for what he dressed as. Because when I was talking to him, he was like, he was kind of like this.
On the other place.
Yes.
So I was wondering too next, if we do another site. My parents.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay.
You'd hear on one of the hotels.
Oh, okay. Okay. I know.
How are you?
Good. Do you see the review? So yes, we'll see.
Okay. No, we don't.
I don't really care. I wanted to have an idea. I'm telling you that because you're going to go talking about. So I'm just like, I'm trying to stay down. During the transition, during the, it's incredible. They have. I'll say a thirty minutes. Thirty second. Um, two, two sixty second. Hello, girl. You got your email today. I'm excited for your post. Yeah. Um. And we did.
We did.
Yeah. People are interested.
I mean, I, okay. So you could send it. In the air. No, I didn't. Okay. I did. But she just went really quick before you. It was like darker or something. And then I went lighter. No. But, yeah.
Okay.
But it does. When I first did it, I knew. I looked like I'm red.
That wasn't what I was going for.
Oh, my cute.
But wasn't even the word board.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
This is just an idea. So if I saw that, that would be. Right. You know, like.
Is it there or is it here?
Okay, we're gonna answer out.
Yeah.
California or whatever. Streetlights.
Okay. So you said that. Maybe just wait. And.
I guess they're sponsors, sir.
Okay. Oh, I don't need those. Okay. It's okay.
I almost get another better thing.
Yeah, that's all I asked for. And then how do you see that?
No, in fact, um. Develop a kind of a form.
Okay.
I have the hesitation to let you know. Can I use a little?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
So I have another.
Okay. Well, we're sticking to the.
Um, I did not check. I did not ask the numbers.
Okay.
I'd like to talk to you.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe tomorrow before. If I find out if that room is available at the hotel.
Okay.
And then I'll have the options available.
Okay.
What's the, what's really the best?
Okay.
I don't know. If I CCG. I also said Shandra, she was asking how much time. They thought that.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I thought.
So I can be sure that I give the full forty five minutes or come on to half.
Oh.
What, what, maybe you want to help.
I saw something about Alex. So Jackie, Jackie, I don't know why I was bored, but that's why I was.
Congress.
Okay.
Twenty to thirty.
Okay.
Especially me, you were. Progressively. Of the street. As confirmed.
Okay.
But they have told. And they're the.
Okay.
They have. But they are, they, they are ready.
It's a problem. It's pretty. You have.
And obviously, it's.
I love what you're.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
I think.
It was the ultimate.
She was able to say some.
Yes.
So I would, I want to stick with.
Okay. Yeah.
One of my best. How is. Sixty. So have you.
Yes. Yes. It's really nice. It's the way they turn. That really makes it. And then, I think that was actually. From something in addition. Or like, it's like the. Addition. The, the, the related. Because it's like we are sure. Oh, this is for. This is for. Yeah. So they're probably on the wage. So they're adding this. Oh, okay. I thought it was for like this. It's for this. That person. Oh. So it's really just. But I've seen. Oh. Well, you're kind of like looking like you're just really. Yours.
All right. Before we get started, I just want to make sure that we're good on the IT side. Look over there. Got the thumbs up. And has our city attorney been able to join in yet? Okay, so we're good there also. Sorry, folks, for the delay. Trying to get everybody all on board and situated. So we appreciate you guys holding on for us. And with that, we will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor. I'll take role. Councilmember Spencer Wong.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Daly.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We did not have a closed session that was on the agenda. So we don't need to report out on that. And then Councilmember Popescu was scheduled to do our invocation and pledge of allegiance, but he is not available this evening. So we will punt. And I guess I'll do it. So if you would all please join me.
Start with the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, please join us tonight as we debate important matters for our city and for the community in which we live. We thank you so much for all the blessings that we do have. And we thank you for such a great environment to live. And we ask and pray that you continue to bless our city and the folks that live and do business here. In your name, amen.
Amen.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. They said she's on. Okay, Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
At this point, we will open it up to public participation for non-agendized items. These are any comments that are not related to a specific item on our agenda and limited to three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone on our list? We do.
Mr. Mayor, we have a speaker, Christopher Juden Patel. If I pronounce that correctly, I apologize.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members and city manager. My name is Christopher Jun Patel. Very close. I reside at two five six two four State Street. I'm here tonight to provide notice of a significant ongoing issue with a city-owned tree located at my address. For years, this tree has been a source of escalating damage and a clear public safety hazard. I'm here to formally request that the city take.
Excuse me. Can you speak up a little bit into the microphone? You're a tall guy.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, that's better. I can hear myself now. Here to formally request the city take responsibility for this tree by removing it and repairing the infrastructure. It is damaged, including the main water line to our home. My concerns are not based on dislike for the tree that's distracting. It was a large driver in the purchase of our home, actually. But on a documented history of destruction. First, the tree is causing direct and costly damage to public and private property. The tree's aggressive root system has lifted and cracked the public sidewalk on the west side, creating a tripping hazard. Grown over and displaced the sidewalk on the south side. Require the replacement of three quarters of my driveway, plus the adjacent sidewalk in the past. Most critically, the roots have now infiltrated and damaged the main water service line to my house. This is not a private sewer lateral. It's the main pressurized water line from the city's connection into our home. The damage requires immediate repair. Second, the tree is a documented public safety hazard. The uplifted sidewalk is a liability waiting to happen for any pedestrian. Because of our long cul-de-sac and the elderly care, two doors down, we have many families and elderly who walk down our street. The immense amount of leaves and debris it drops creates a slick slippery mat on the road and sidewalks around it. I've personally witnessed and have reports from neighbors of several motorcyclists falling because of the mess it makes. Despite multiple emails and requests of the city's Public Works Department to address the hazardous mess, the issue has consistently been ignored, allowing it danger to persist. Third, there's a clear precedent for removal. This is not an isolated incident. On my very street, three other trees have been removed for previous damage to my neighbor's properties. The root system of these species are simply incompatible with this urban infrastructure. I understand and appreciate the value of our urban canopy. However, this particular tree has proven itself to be destructive and dangerous. The city has a responsibility to maintain its property in a way that does not harm the residents it serves. Therefore, tonight, I'm notifying this council of this hazard and I'm requesting that the city authorize the immediate removal of this hazardous tree, repair the main water service line to my home and its roots have damaged, repair the public sidewalks and the roots it has destroyed. I've brought photographs of the damaged area for the council to review. If you guys would like them, I'm ready to work with the city manager and the Public Works Department for a swift resolution. Thank you for your time on this urgent matter.
Thank you, sir. Normally, you know, we, we don't comment on non-agendized items because of the Brown Act and whatnot. But I just wanted to confirm, I'm pretty sure the city manager has your info now and he, he or somebody will contact you.
Yes, our staff already went out to take a look at his property twice. And is it where a mature oak trees, historical oak trees that, that we have to, we're going to preserve? And routinely, if you haven't lifted a sidewalk in the driveway, we will replace it. So we have a contractor right now that, that we just, the city council just wanted a contract to remove and replace driveway. So we'll do that.
Um, well, okay. Again, we can't get into too much unless we agendize this in the next meeting and talk about it. But I was just looking at a Google Earth picture of it. Is this the one that has enveloped the street light?
Yes.
Do you have a picture?
I do.
Let me look at my screen. Is something current? Sure. Thank you. Okay, we, we, we can't legally, you know, comment or make a decision tonight on this item, but we'll, we'll confer with the city manager and, and figure out what the options are. If it's something that does need to come back to us, then we'll agendize it probably for like next month, so we can legally talk about it. But at this point, we'll.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time.
I'm pretty sure hopefully we'll come to some resolution. And, and if not, then get ahold of us and we'll figure it out.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I just ask for.
Yes, sir.
You cited this is a tree that is, you said something, it's a heritage tree or something.
And we usually don't cut the trees.
Yeah.
We save the trees and we fix the sidewalk.
And, and that all makes sense. What, what? Okay. My question is, who decides if this is, you know, a unique historical tree or not? Is that a state law or Loma Linda law? Or that, that's my only question.
I'll call like, in the past, if we cut down a tree.
Yeah.
We get in trouble.
Yeah. From citizens.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
But we've also, we've had very specific cases where we have had to, to make a decision as a council on trees also. So.
True. Thank you.
It's not, I'm not tipping a hat either way, or I'm just saying if, if this has to come to the council for a decision, we've done that before as well. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, any other public comments?
No one's, I don't have another person who registered, but I don't know if there was anyone else.
Melissa Sealy is my first, I'm attending here. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we will close the public comments section and move on to section number two, which are public hearing items. Item two A is a public hearing to adopt a resolution for annexation of landscape maintenance district tract two zero four zero three. And I'm not sure who's doing the presentation on this, but I know we do have letters that have to be read in, correct?
Yes, we, we present at the last city council meeting, this is two new residential tract called Trumark, which is one to the north side of Korean Church, another one to the south side, Korean Church. And they're required to have the landscape assessment district. So this, this first item is landscape assessment district where we sent out the petition, right? Lynette.
Ballots were mailed out to the.
Ballots for them to vote on it. And we have it here at the city clerk. She can open it and read it. Read it.
Okay. Should we open the public hearing first, or do you want to do the?
Yes, please.
Okay. We're gonna open a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item that may have ventured all the way down here to talk about landscape maintenance, please run forward. I'm seeing nobody, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll ask the clerk to open the ballots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city received four ballots. Four ballots, two for annexation eighty and two for annexation eighty one. So I will open the annexation eighty for the vote. So this ballot that we received, they were in favor of the assessment. The second ballot for annexation eighty. They were also in favor of the assessment. And then we received two ballots for annexation eighty one to annex into the LMD district.
Do we need to hold a separate public hearing on that? Because that's a separate.
For this one, the public hearing, this is for annexation eighty and eighty one into the landscape maintenance district. So the first two were for annexation eighty.
Oh, for eighty.
And these two are for annexation eighty one into the LMD.
Yep.
And this ballot, they were in favor of the assessment. And the second ballot, they were also in favor of the assessment. So we had no objections to that.
Okay, thank you. Comments or motion from the council?
I make a motion that we approve.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Motion is to adopt council bill R dash twenty twenty five dash thirty three, waiving the reading of the resolution in its entirety and read by title only. A resolution of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, California, confirming the annexation of annexation number eighty, which is Eden at Covenant Point, tract two zero four zero three, and annexation number eighty one, which is Haven at Covenant Point, tract two zero four zero four, into the landscape maintenance dis, landscape maintenance district number one. The diagram and assessments related thereto overruling all protests concerning the assessments and ordering the levy and collection of assessments commencing in fiscal year twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, if not maintained by the homeowners association. I will take your vote, please. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to two B, which is also a public hearing dealing with the street light assessment districts for the same areas. Same process, right?
Yes.
No other presentation. We'll open the public comments. Milford? Where's Milford? No? Okay. Close the public comments and move on to ballots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city received four ballots for the assessment to the street light benefit district number one. The first ballot, this is for tract two zero four zero three into the street light benefit assessment, was the, was there in favor of the assessment.
I don't know about you, but the suspense is killing me.
So the second ballot, this is also for tract two zero four zero four. They were in favor of the assessment. Next ballot is for tract two zero four zero three. They are in favor of the assessment. And the last one. This one is for tract two zero four zero four. They are in favor of the assessment. So we had no objections.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the will of the council.
We don't get a hundred percent support on any measure, so this is, this is significant.
So I probably shouldn't, but I'm gonna go there. I do believe these are done by the developer while they still own the property before they sell it. So of course it's gonna be a hundred percent.
Okay, okay.
That's why I was not anticipating much of anything.
I'll move approval.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Motion is to adopt council bill R dash twenty twenty five dash thirty four, waiving the reading of the resolution in its entirety and read by title only. A resolution of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, California, confirming the annexation of tract two zero four zero three, which is Eden at Covenant Point, and tract two zero four zero four, Haven at Covenant Point, into the Loma Linda Street Light Benefit Assessment District number one. The diagram and assessments related hereto overruling all protests concerning the assessments and ordering the levy and collection of assessments commencing in fiscal year twenty twenty six, twenty seven. And I will take your vote, please.
So for everybody paying attention out there, this is a good thing. And I will say thank you to the future residents that will move into these houses, because if this wasn't done, then we, as the rest of the residents of the city, would eat the cost of paying for all of that, which already occurs in some other parts of town where we can't reassess. So one of the things we struggle with every year is taking money out of the general fund to cover for neighborhoods and communities that are, that were never set up this way and that are high cost and that cost is shared by the entire city. So as new communities come online, it's a standard practice to ensure this happens. So those communities are responsible for their own landscaping and maintenance of streetlights.
And motion carried.
All right. Thank you very much. That is all of our public hearing items. No scheduled agenda items, and we can move into section four, which is our consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull four E.
Sir? Any, any other ones? Rhonda, are you good? Okay, do you want to just address four E real quick and then we can take it all as a?
Probably. This has to do with, with strengthening our local economy with a grant program for development of new restaurants, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, yeah, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. It's laid out here, but even after reading it a couple of times, I'm not entirely clear on just how this works or what Don Rowe's office has to do with it.
So I can give you, I can probably give you some clarification. So she called me the other day when we talked about this. We had talked about this program before. And, and the idea behind it is to provide some type of relief for a, a new business owner in establishing, in this case, a restaurant, in terms of some of the initial costs and things that are so expensive and so hard being in California.
What, what's the source of the money?
Uh, the source is directly from her budget. So it's a, it's a, it's a grant to us from.
For the vast audience, television audience we have, Don Rowe is a county supervisor.
Yes, the supervisor.
Her budget.
Her, her just, her discretionary budget for her district, which we fall within her district.
Right.
So this is her way to help try to support business growth and specifically restaurant growth, as we talked about. Again, working on our blue zone image and some of those other things, trying to attract the right type of restaurants. We talked about some of the challenges we've had in getting new businesses to start with the, with the incredible costs and complexity, you know, what it's, what it's like to do business now. So the idea was to, to help do that. There is a match piece with it, but this really does look like it, it could benefit. We talked about some specific hopefuls. We'll see what, what staff, I'm assuming Lorena will run with this or do something with it, right?
Yes, correct.
Well, if Lorena supports it, what am I?
I'll go ahead and manage this task.
He's seventy-five percent, a twenty-five percent local manager.
Okay.
So we have the work with the, the supervisor staff here tonight here.
Ah, okay.
And, and, and so we, we try to come out with ways to help local businesses. We have a restaurant that, that wanted to come into town. The cost of client is so expensive now, so we, we work with the county to see, well, maybe we can come up with thirty thousand dollar grant and buy for three businesses or ten thousand dollars each. And they have application, we have procedure on how, how we wait, the, the application. And ten thousand, not much, right?
Is there a sunset on this?
Oh, yes.
Why don't we hear from the staff person? I didn't realize that we had one of Don's primary staff people here to present. That was with your drive to get here, right?
Yes, indeed. Good evening. Respectfully, Mayor Pro Tim, I got looped into this today, so I am going to defer to Lorena to, if you do have that date there.
Yes, I believe the agreement's in your packets. I do believe it's a one-year agreement. It is a first come, first served type of grant, so we do expect to dis, disperse those funds within the year. I don't think it'll be too difficult as we are speaking to various restaurants now.
And, and I'm, I'm taking a page from Councilwoman Spencer Wang on this, but. but are there criteria? I mean, this is a Blue Zone. Are there...
That was required from Supervisor Don Rowe's office for staff to create the application, the criteria, as well as the scoring rubric. So we did draft that and provided that to the supervisor to go in their packet so we can get this approved.
If we don't find anybody, like say, nobody comes in at the end of the year, can we use that with an existing business? Because I have a particular business in mind. It's even the... Well, I don't know if we can say, but there are certain businesses that could benefit even to adapt.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and I'll answer that. The supervisor's office was giving... It was up to our discretion as to what and how we wanted to use it. Staff came up with new restaurants. If this is something, I believe, if the council wants to change, we can definitely look into that.
That's a great question.
If the budget... If the time runs out, I don't want to lose out.
Well, in talking with her, I think her intention was new businesses. That was specifically said. So I think that was her goal. Obviously, I think we take it back with an ask if we got to that point, but I would wait and see how we do. Because the idea was to try to help us attract new businesses as well.
Thank you.
I can make a mean taco, maybe we should...
What street corner do you want to claim?
He can't even spell taco.
Thank you, Lorena. You see, you didn't really need me at all. Thank you very much for talking about this. I appreciate it.
If that was a challenge, we'll work in another way to bring you up before the night's over. All right, I think question hopefully answered.
Yeah, no question just answered. It's just when somebody's passing out money, I want to know the details because usually there are kinks to it. But if you've spoken with Don and this sounds all credible and legitimate to you and there aren't angles that we would struggle with, then, you know, okay.
You know what's gonna sound funny to you is that you're part of the reason she called me the other day. Because she had seen you at the Omni-Trans meeting.
Many for years.
It sparked her memory to reach out, and so she called me after leaving that meeting with you, which was very positive. It just was...
I'm sure.
That reminded her that, oh, I should reach out and talk. We'll talk about it. So that was...
Sounds good.
How that worked.
Thank you. I'll... That answers my question, so I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Please vote. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
By the way, this system of voting vastly superior to what we used to use with the little buttons because I could never quite get those straight, so... Your computer system's working well.
Did you leave the old... Are they still in here? I can't see.
It doesn't matter.
You can still push them if you want.
Yeah. I bet I'll push the wrong ones, so...
All right, Section 5, we're moving on to Old Business. This is our second reading of an ordinance from last month, adopting a new chapter in the municipal code titled Flood Control Measures for FEMA regulations. This was one of those that we often find in front of us that we really have no control over and are kind of forced to do by just process and regulation. But I don't know if our fire marshal would like to add any more to it or we'll just dispense with it.
I think go for it.
He says go for it. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Okay, here we go.
I want to live up to Don's expectations here. The... I'm disappointed there's only three of us here because I was planning to vote against it. And even though I fully recognize that, you know, this is one of those gifts from the federal government that we didn't ask for and as you pointed out, have no control over, here's my issue with it. In some of the other boards and so forth that I'm involved with, they go out and meet with constituents when it's gonna potentially have a significant impact on them. Several years ago, we learned, my wife and I learned, that we had suddenly been identified as being in a fire zone and had our homeowner's insurance canceled because we were in a fire zone. Now, we had lived there for, what, 20, 30 years already? But all of a sudden, the game changed. And I was... We were both unhappy. Talked with... I'll tell you, the insurance company was Wamanessa. They had been a great insurance company, but all of a sudden, we're persona non grata. And knew nothing, didn't see this coming in any way. That's my issue with this. And honestly, after the meeting we had last month, I expected a full chamber of people that live north of the flood canal right now in here protesting, saying, "How can this happen all of a sudden?" So my concern and my objection to it is based on the fact that there are hundreds of people, maybe more, that have no clue that they are now going to be in a flood zone where they maybe have lived there for decades and all of a sudden, they're gonna lose insurance or have substantial increases. And I think that's wrong. So I'm not sure whose responsibility it is to meet with those people, but they have a right to know about this. This is gonna be a... For the people and I don't think we have a map we can throw up, but we had a map last time. But this is gonna be a substantial impact, I'm predicting, on the home insurance rates for... Go ahead, Jarb. Tell me. Please, tell me I'm wrong.
No, the thing is, if you, as a council, don't approve this, then as a matter of fact, then they can't buy insurance. They can't even purchase the... If they have mortgage on the house, the mortgage requires the flood insurance and they can't get it.
You're telling me that they're damned if they don't and if we don't and damned if we do, right? Okay, that's my objection, is the process doesn't work in this case. Somebody, and you tell me who, I don't know who it is, but somebody should be sending out notifications that there are gonna be community meetings in those districts that say, "This is what's happening and this is why, and this is gonna be the impact." As a homeowner, they have a right to know. And there's only three of us, so if I vote no, then I don't know where that leaves us.
You know, Rhonda, I think we're all in agreement with you and so it wouldn't bother me if you vote your conscience. We do what you gotta do. I think then what'll have to happen is it'll just have to be brought back at some point. And I don't even know what the consequence is if we didn't vote it in. It's more of an acknowledgement that we've been noticed on this, right? But...
It does have a deadline, so our deadline is tonight. That's why we kind of asked the councilwoman to be here. So this is the most important item on tonight's agenda.
What's the damage if we voted no?
What is the deadline? What does that mean?
Was it October?
The ordinance has to be in effect by October 31st. After today's adoption, it takes 30 days for the ordinance. 30 days after the ordinance is adopted, it goes into effect. So if it's approved tonight, it will go into effect October 9th and will be in compliance with FEMA.
So if I'm a homeowner and I've lived there for years and years, and now suddenly I discover I'm living in a flood zone based on this FEMA study, what is the impact if we... On me as a homeowner, if we don't pass it? And what's the impact if we do pass it?
Okay, the impact is if there's a flood, they're not gonna have any insurance to cover the repair for the house or the properties. So by having FEMA...
So the flip. If we don't approve it, that will be the outcome.
Right.
And if we do approve it?
If we do approve it, then if they borrow the money from the bank...
Insurance rates go up multiple...
No, they will require to purchase the flood insurance. If they finance the property, the bank will require. If you don't, if you do not, if you have cash to purchase the house, then no. You don't require to purchase flood insurance, just like the fire insurance that you mentioned. You'd have to buy it if you don't want to. If you, again...
I understand, but it's a risk assessment.
Right. The same thing with the flood. It's a risk that if you have it and it's flood, then you have cover. If you decide not to purchase insurance, then it's not covered. That's it. It's a requirement for more like the lending agency.
Okay, so I guess my fundamental question is, I don't live in that zone.
Yes.
But if I did, I want to know what's the worst... It doesn't sound like there's any good outcome to this. And so what are the lesser of the two outcomes you're describing?
Is the property owner in a flood plain will have to purchase the flood insurance?
And how do they know that? They don't know that until they go to renew their homeowner's insurance?
Yes, and I can... We can mail them out. We can mail the notice to them, but...
As a homeowner, I want to know. Nobody from the city or insurance or anybody else told me that I was lived in a fire zone?
No, no, no.
So that's my issue, is a communication issue. Go ahead, Lorena.
I guess, and this is where it kind of comes down to... This sounds... This just doesn't sound right when I say it, but... We're not the ones making that finding, but we're gonna incur the cost to send that information out to let everybody know you are now in what FEMA or on your side of town, what the state says is now a fire zone. And so what's unfortunate is our town is basically now divided into either flood or fire. Realistically, everybody's in one or the other and some insurance company's making money off of it. Whether or not it's realistic of the actual threat or not, that's debatable, but...
So I guess my point is, what do we have control over? And what I'm hearing is the only thing we have control over is communication with those citizens. And I wish I had thought this through a month ago so we could have sent that communication out to the citizens so they could all be here, all the homeowners could be here tonight.
What's the approximate cost to send something out like that?
I don't know at this time, but I don't know how many homes out there. But again, it can be done. After you approve this, I can mail out the notices to the property owners and...
Property owners have a right to know.
Yes.
That's my point.
We can do that.
Even though I don't live in that zone, they have a right to know.
By versa, remember before the County Flood Control, US Army Corps of Engineers improved the San Mateo Channel, all the property north of the channel were in a flood plain. And we completed that improvement and then those property are lifted out of flood plain. So they don't have to pay the flood insurance anymore. So the goal is, is I have been working with the County Flood Control to put this channel on the list of improvement, so...
And that isn't likely to happen until there's further developments?
Or they have funding. It's more like the funding sort.
And that ain't gonna happen.
Well, it did. It did happen. It did happen for the San Mateo.
I understand. I'm saying that budgets are being whacked consistently for a while now, so we're not likely to see any kind of money coming into this.
And I hate to say this, but...
Again, tell me I'm wrong.
No, no, no. The way work is, for the drain is they have to work at a downstream end first.
That's what I wanted you to talk about.
And so they have to work with the County Flood Control, Corps of Engineers, and the city of San Bernardino where this channel tied to Santa River. So they have to work at the downstream end and work their way up.
And that I understand and I appreciate the explanation. But if I'm a homeowner, I don't know any of that. All I know is all of a sudden, I'm getting whacked for, you know... Either I have flood insurance or I'm in a flood zone, so I've got to deal with that. And the fact that nobody is communicating with homeowners on that unless they're tuned in to watch us last month or tonight.
Correct. They did send out notice, but on the newspaper. That's typical. I know, I know. But that's a typical of what they do. But they don't send out a letter to every homeowner or property owner, so...
Yeah, what's our... Not to... I feel like we're getting into a rabbit hole, but what's our cost to add notifications to our billing documents when we do that? We've done that before.
It's probably about $5,000 because, you know, so we can do it.
That's citywide or that for these...
Well, again, because it's labor and the mailing costs...
Because I was thinking about killing two birds with one stone. Now, see, this is where I feel like I'm getting a little off track. But what if you put out something that talks about both the flood and fire zones and recommend to homeowners that they take a look at our website, which now shows what FEMA and the state have designated? So my point is, instead of just doing it for that one district, I was curious of the cost to maybe...
When we did it for the sewer or a trash rate increase...
It's about $5,000, $6,000.
And but the challenge is with the fire zone, each insurance company have a different map, okay? So I'm pointing to Tom.
So I discovered, but I didn't know it at the time.
Okay, so just because you have farmer, the fire zone might be different than state farm. And that could be a challenge.
And honestly, I still don't understand that. And I live in... Because I can get insurance some places and I can't get insurance other places because what you say, they all draw their own map.
But if it's a simple enough notification... I'm trying to figure out how to accomplish what you'd like to accomplish. If it's a notification that every homeowner should check recent developments in terms of flood and fire zone status and maybe list some resources, that way, it's still on them, but we give them at least a notice that they need to look at that.
And I would suggest, again, as somebody that pays bills at home, because with every bill I get, there's garbage mail with it, that it be in bold print or different colored paper or something that would get my attention because that I would pay attention to, but, you know... I'm one horse in this whole thing. I'm not the... And so I'd love to hear from community people that are here tonight, too.
Trust me, because I live in town, my aunt live in town. A lot of people live in town. They all call me every time we raise the rate of insurance.
Yeah, yeah, no. And sometimes I think I'm the only councilman that has neighbors that all know where I'm at and talk to me. But that's a democracy. So it's the way it's... You know, nobody held a gun to my head to run for office, so that's what I'm here for. And that's why I have an issue with this, is that we're gonna spring a surprise on a whole bunch of people.
I like the mayor idea. I would be happy to send, work with Tom on the fire maps or statement. And we sent out a letter.
A statement that covers all of it and we get it out there and we let everybody know that there's been a lot of changes. And that way, everybody's covered. It's not just one...
And this is a new one. This is a new one.
Yes.
Trust me, I've heard from my neighbor, my constituents on the fire issue.
And I know they know how to find you because they tell me they can find you. With that, does that help you at all move this along?
At least we're communicating with them. I still don't like it, but at least we're communicating with the constituents.
Okay. Well, with that being said, we still have to do a second reading and entertain a motion at this point, right?
This is a second reading, so yes. This is to adopt. This motion would be to adopt this ordinance.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
All right. All right. All right. I'll second it with, under protest.
Thank you. Motion is to adopt Council Bill O-202503, waiving the reading of the ordinance in its entirety and read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California, adopting new chapter 19.12 flood control measures of the Loma Linda Municipal Code to adopt flood hazard maps, designate a flood plain, designate a flood plain administrator and address for other purposes, providing for severability and repealing, sorry, repealing ordinance numbers 148, 369, 380, and 678, and establishing an effective date of October 9th, 2025. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, we're gonna talk about rescheduling our November meeting.
And the fourth Tuesday of the month is have to be on Thanksgiving. So what I request is we pick the one in the middle, which is the third Tuesday, which is the November 18th. So I would like to request that we move the November meeting to November 18th.
Rhonda, what do you think?
Go for it.
Ron? This is probably just a direction only, correct?
Go for it.
Yes, reschedule. Yes.
All right. Looks like you have no opposition.
Okay, great.
Although I think it'd be kind of fun to do a Thanksgiving meeting with...
With turkeys?
Turkey.
Toe-furking.
I might be in Florida.
As long as this does not affect our Thai Christmas. Okay.
I will be here.
We have a Thai tradition here at Christmas time. Okay, moving on to reports of council members.
We met, or I met this past week at Stell's, not Stell's, it's Two Lads Bakery here. And they had a question. I was trying to figure out, Mel is the owner there. She came out and was talking, and she's really interested in making it more visible and having things. And one of the things she said is if it's possible to have chairs outside and around. In fact, so I said I would bring it forward and ask. I think Lorena or somebody sent me this huge, long email, but I'm wondering if someone can help her or support her, because her business is a popular one, and I have a feeling that might actually become the Loma Linda Stell's, right? Have you been to Stell's, where there's a line out the door? And if you don't get there before 11:30, it's packed. So if we can support her, and eventually she grow big enough that she even takes over that empty ABC bookstore, I think that would be, but even getting the ability to have, and I don't know how they do it, outdoor seating with the chairs and the umbrellas, because she was even saying, right now, you don't know what's in that Stater Brother complex other than Stater Brothers. If you look at the sign, all it says is Stater Brothers, right? You don't know the thing. So she was even recommending, because she's spent hundreds of thousands of dollars getting that up to speed. And hers is a great business, but ideally, if we can support her in expanding seating or something, something to do to support her. And I didn't know, it's not whose district, I don't know. I just like it there, so I thought it was a great idea.
Yes, outdoor dining is identified in the zoning code, so it is an allowed use with director approval. So she can go ahead and reach out to me, forward her the email, or come. We have planning staff available, too, to answer any of her questions, and we can help her through the application process.
What do you mean, what do you mean application process?
So outdoor dining requires what we call a minor use permit, a specific use permit, but it doesn't have to come before a city council or a planning commission. It would be director approval. So there should be no reason that we would deny it, but there would be certain conditions and requirements that she would have to adhere to.
And she just reaches out to you, Lorena, just for that? Okay.
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Cool. That's it?
All right. How's your committee going?
It's slow. One of the things that was recommended, and I'm hesitant to ask, but is a community survey. You know, Redlands has gotten a community survey going right now, collecting what people are using, what they want. And this was something that has been recommended from the committee, is to develop our Loma Linda community survey. So there, and it may just be what people, what their needs are, how they see it developing as a blue zone, something like that. But I know there's always a cost. I don't know what Redlands paid, but they have a really nice community survey right now.
We did once, Councilman Floyd Peterson.
Yeah, I was the students. We had to go out as students and do, and survey. We had to design that survey for you. We had to go and collect the survey, so I remember Floyd Peterson well.
So you have experience.
Yeah, so we did. So we did. That's why I know it's a lot of work, but I have to punt that one over. I don't have, there's no, I don't have that class, so I can't make the students do it. But yes.
Or could you recommend some firms that do the survey, or do...
Andrea may have an idea of this. Andrea was with me at, with Mel over there when she was talking and had ideas.
And I recommend anybody to go there. It's delicious. Really is great. But thank you, mayor and council, city manager. The premise is that it would be much different than just an on-the-ground survey, that in fact would be digital, and through, you know, an app, and then it would be, data would be gathered very quickly. It could be reported out very quickly. And I do have a contact, I reached out. The survey would cost anywhere between 20 to 60,000, depending on what kind of services you might want out of that, and how much analysis you want after the fact. But the goal is truly to find out, of the 60,000 people who come to Loma Linda on a daily basis to work, how are you capturing that? Because it might be easier to capture if you're looking at the residents, because you know where they are, you know a lot more about them than you do about the population that comes in on a daily basis.
I'm sure the university's probably done something like this. I'm sure they know who's coming in and what's happening. I don't know.
They know numbers. I don't know that they know demographics.
It's more, it's more also too, like what your preferences are, like what kind of purchases do you want, what kind of restaurants? So it's kind of twofold. One is for the community that comes here, even lives here. And the other part of a survey could be adapted for even the, like, we could even go and just do one-on-one interviewing with the businesses to see what they need. But the community survey is more, what do you wish we had, what kind of businesses, what kind of activities, all of that.
Because even speaking with Mel's husband at one point, he talked about that they were interested in opening their restaurant at 7:00 a.m. every morning. Well, come to find out that based on the input from the new customers, they now open at 6:00 a.m. because they need it to be opened earlier, which really, again, is hitting that incoming traffic. So there's just a lot to be gathered. It's just ideas right now that we could, you know, go over. And I could have Adam Pobolski meet with you and see if there's ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Ron?
No, are you, is that it? Oh, come on, Rhonda, you got more.
I got one. Okay, I do have one more, but I haven't checked it out. Some, Vim and Vigor, one of the gym members was saying, coming out of Benton, turning left onto Barton, that that road perhaps needs a, and I haven't checked it out, but they were saying there's something about the traffic there needing like a left turn signal. It's a high risk for a lot of accidents, and I wasn't quite sure. But they said somehow turning from Benton onto Barton might be a hazard. And I've heard back that the other stop sign that they wanted is a no-go, but this is a different, this is a different one. That's it. Now I'm done.
My question, and Tom, I apologize, because I like to touch bases with people before I bring things up in council. But you and I've talked about that on the little mini mall on the corner of Redlands and Mountain View. That sign just has been driving me nuts for years. It's all faded out. It just looks crappy. And I know that you and I talked, and that you've been following up on that, so can you give me an update? Because I haven't seen any progress.
Yeah, that's a great segue and great question. So today, we actually, I actually had, we're using a contractor right now for code enforcement services. And so I actually directed him to go out there today, not only for that signage, but for the whole Redlands corridor.
Right.
It's looking a little...
Yep.
Hagrid.
I agree.
So he sent notice of violation to the hotel complex, Nader's Auto, the Dollar Tree, and the courtyard strip mall that you're talking about, to replace the signage and for landscape and all that for beautification, because it's one of our main arterials in the town, and it's something I want to take care of for economic development to kind of beautify those main arterials in town to incentivize people to come in. So that was taken care of today, actually. And if they don't comply with the notice of violation formally in writing from the city, then that's when we escalate it to citation process. I don't want to get it to there. We usually get voluntary compliance. It's just, a lot of these business owners don't live in town, and they're kind of, they own multiple places. So just notifying them, usually we get compliance that way.
And I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
The, we've had difficulty with the owner of that strip mall for a while, with landscaping and all kinds of issues. So that's why I'm wanting to turn up the heat a little bit, because that's, we've only got two primary entrances from the freeway to our city, and that's right there on the corner. And it's been a problem for a long time. They do good businesses. They've got thriving businesses, as best I can tell. But they need to amp up their game a little bit, because that's one of the entryways into our city, is my view. But we've talked about that, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, we definitely notified today formally and with the notice of violation in writing, certified mail. I've spoken to the property owner there, Mr., I won't say the name, but he's given me his word. He supposedly had a sign made, the vendor went under, and now he's going with a different vendor. He asked for a couple of weeks. That's usually what I give people is time, as long as I get their word that they're gonna, they're gonna do it, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I appreciate it. That's it for me.
That's it. All right. Do we have any reports of officers?
Yes, Lorena has that announcement.
I do have an announcement for the audience and for council members. We are, for the first time, going to be hosting a coffee with the mayor, in this case, coffee with Mayor Duper at Starbucks here off Mountain and, Mountain View Avenue and Barton Road. That's going to be Sunday, September 28, 10 to 12 p.m. That is Sunday, right before our Founder's Day, which will be our 55th anniversary as a city. So if you can, and you're here on Sunday that morning, stop by, chat with the mayor, with your community, and enjoy a free taste of coffee and some treats.
And the owner of Starbucks is...
The outreach coordinator, Mr. Josh, he's also a barista from Starbucks. He is here tonight, if anybody wants to reach out to him with questions.
All right.
It's gonna be all paid for by Starbucks. But he might be serving coffee behind the bar.
I want to do that. I'm in. All right, cool. That's it on our agenda. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We look forward to seeing everybody maybe next month. Thank you, guys. That's it.
Yeah. No, because they, if I put, like, it's nice.
And you don't even have like all the eyes looking at you. It's like just these people. Oh, yeah. And it goes by so fast. You're like, did I say everything?
I skipped somewhere.
No.
I summarized.
How funny.